All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'll call into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on November 16th, beginning at 7:13 PM. Thank you, everyone, for coming out to be with us this evening. We'll start, as usual, our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. Walton in leading us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And also, please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. I will do that as well. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence. All right. Let's see. The -- I don't know why there's these individuals here tonight.
We all want to speak.
I'm sorry. I don't see any blue cards. It's past 7:00 PM. No. In all seriousness, the first item on our agenda program presentation is the Arlington Retired School Employees Association Namesake Book Presentation. That is wonderful. Ms. Johnston? Ah, there you are. Okay.
Good evening. Dr. Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos. We are joined today by the Arlington Retired School Employees Association and some of our namesakes. The Communications Office has been working with Pat and Bobby and some of the other members of the Retired School Employees Association on a history project for our district. And so, we have information on our website about all of our namesakes, and we have created this poster. And then, they have put together a book with bios and information about all of our namesakes in the district. So, I will turn it over to Ms. Pruitt to make her presentation.
President Rice, board members, and Dr. Cavassos, this is Bobby Griffin, and I'm Pat Pruitt, and we're here on the behalf of the Arlington Retired School Employees. And we have -- would like to present this namesake album to you for your good keeping. As you can see, we have put together a picture and bio of each namesake in the district. We took this project on about two years ago to continue the preservation of the history of AISD. And we feel like this booklet and the framed poster can be a lasting and continuing memorial to those educators that have made this district great. Everyone, as Leslie mentioned, everybody can access the website, which is aisd.net/history/namesakes, and see each picture and each bio. So, we hope you'll take advantage of that. We would also like to thank a big thank you to Leslie Johnson and Mercedes Myers of the Communications Department for their help and guidance, and to Robert Spence and Mackenzie Stokes, who helped us with the pictures and set up the website, and Mitch Barnum, who worked with us making the poster from the Image Processing Department. We couldn't have done it without them. But it was a labor of love, and we enjoyed doing it. It was very good. Thank you.
Wow. That is fantastic. That is incredible. It really, really is. Thank you so much. I can't wait to look through this, and that it's digitally preserved as well out there for the entire community to see at all times and have that accessibility. There's so much greatness in so many of you that are there, as are namesakes in the audience tonight, as well as those that have gone before us. There's such incredible, incredible stories that each one of them have. And I know for me personally, there were several that I had no idea who they were as far as their contribution, really, except for the name on the building. This is -- and I know I'm not alone. This is going to do so much, I think, for our community, keeping it a community together as family, and being able to celebrate all of those wonderful inspirational individuals throughout our district. Great thing for our community, great thing for our students as well. So, what I'd like to do, it's not on our agenda, but I'd like to take about a 10-minute break so that we can, as a board, come down, visit with you, look at the artwork there, thumb through the book. Unless my colleagues have any objections to that, I'll say that we'll come back here around 7:30. All right. All right. Call this meeting back into session. So, next, we have a public hearing on the agenda. We will now open our public hearing on Schools First State Financial Accountability Rating. Dr. Cavassos.
I'd like to invite Tony Drolinger to give us a presentation on the Schools First Report. Mr. Drolinger.
President Rice. Try this again. President Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. Today, we are talking about Schools First. As you know, Schools First is the financial accountability rating system used by the Texas Education Agency to hold school districts accountable for the quality of their overall financial management practices. And it's really designed to encourage school districts to provide the maximum allocation for direct instruction. And it highlights and discloses the quality of financial management and decisions that we make. As you can see on the screen, Schools First is an acronym. This is the 15th year that ratings have been assigned under the system. I'm pleased to announce that Arlington ISD has received a School First Rating of A Superior Achievement for 2017. This is the highest rating that school districts can get under this system, and it's the same system that we -- the same rating we received last year. As a little bit of background, it was first authorized in 1999 by the Legislature. House Bill 5 was passed in 2013, and that changed the system to include processes for really anticipating future financial solvency. That's the goal of this whole system, is to try to predict financial solvency of school districts. The changes in 2013 came with a three-year phasing period that began with the 2015 rating worksheets. In 2015, that worksheet contained seven indicators, and then, starting in 2016, the worksheet contained 15 indicators. In 2015, it was based on an analysis of staff and financial data, and then, in 2016, they brought in a student element to also factor in. So, that will be in place from 2016 forward. And it's also based on data from the most recently completed and most recently audited school year that TEA had available. So, for 2017, they're looking at data from 2015-16 because that was the data that they had. As you know, we brought the audit for 2017 to you just at the last meeting, and so, they'll use that information to do the ratings for next year. So, again, in 2015, that was the first year of the transition, and so, districts could only receive a pass or fail rating. And then, starting in 2016 was when the agency brought in the letter grade system that we're all so familiar with. So, that's now in place for 2016-17, and it will be in place beyond. But kind of more interesting than the changes in the number of ratings from seven to 15, this chart I'm showing you now shows how the ranges of points required to receive the letter grade ratings have really narrowed, beginning with 2017. So, the stakes for missing points are a whole lot higher now than they ever have been. In the transition year, you can see it was pretty easy to get a pass rating. You get 50% and you pass. That's pretty -- the only other industry I know is kind of maybe weathermen can get it right 50% of the time and still pass. But in 2016 is when they brought in the letter grade system from the A to F. And then, in 2017, the letter grades are still in place, but now, the bandwidth to get an A or a B has really been narrowed down to 10 points apiece. And then, to get a C, it's 20 points. So, again, they're tightening up on the system. The goal is to predict future financial solvency of school districts. And so, I mentioned to you that House Bill 5 was passed, that changed the system. But in House Bill 5, it also requires the Commissioner to look at the system every three years and incorporate any changes to meet the goals of the Legislature and TEA. And from what I understand, from what I've been told, TEA is getting a lot of pressure from the Legislature to try to predict financial solvency better because we've got some districts in the state who, for lack of better terms, are going bankrupt, and they still pass the School First system. And so, the Legislature and TEA saying, "This is not a great system if we can't even predict who's going to go bankrupt in the future." So, they're really going to tighten up, and I see that coming pretty quickly. As far as reporting requirements, districts are required to issue an annual financial report, which we have done. That management report includes the School First evaluation from TEA for the current year. It has to have last year's results included in that. And then, we have to disclose certain transactions between the board and the superintendent in the school district. The requirement also is to hold a public hearing to give individuals the opportunity to comment on the report that they haven't even seen yet, but that's part of the requirement. So, that's what we're doing here tonight. And then, we make the reports available to the public. There's reports available here this evening outside the boardroom. We'll also post it on our website after this meeting, so tomorrow morning, it'll be posted on our website. And then, TEA also has the ratings online that anybody can go look at. With that, that's the end of what I have. I would be happy to answer any questions, and it would also be appropriate to invite public comment.
Well, first off, I don't see any cards here. Is there anybody from the audience that would wish to speak on the Schools First State Finance Accountability Rating? Don't all run up to the podium. Okay. So, with that said, I'll say that the public hearing is now closed, but if my colleagues have some comments, I would like to lead and say, "Great job. Thank you." I know last year and the year before, you were kind of priming us, setting the stage of these things are changing, don't know what it's going to look like. And I think you had -- and Ms. Powell and your whole finance team had probably some angst with where are we going to fall with this. So, congratulations.
No, thank you.
It's wonderful, wonderful stuff. So, very happy to hear that even with that narrow -- narrower window for that superior, you're in it. Thank you very much for all the work that you guys do.
Yes, sir.
Any trustees have any questions or comments for Mr. Drolinger? I don't see any lights indicating such. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we come to the Open Forum for Agenda Items. I do not have any cards. Okay, then, we will consider moving on to action items. We have one action item tonight, considering the resolution to cast votes for Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors. I, at this point, if I see Ms. Walton's light, and I'm interested in any comments as well as willing to accept a motion.
Thank you, President Rice. I move that the Board of Trustees cast our 448 votes, to which we are entitled, in the election of the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors for Mike O'Donnell.
Second.
Okay. I have a second by Ms. -- or a motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mr. Hogg, to support all of our votes in the resolution for Mr. Mike O'Donnell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. O'Donnell, and we wish you the best in your pursuit. Next, we have, moving towards consent items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items trustees wish to withdraw from the consent agenda?
Yes, President Rice, I'd like to withdraw Consent Item D.
For the full -- you always can. Okay. So, to consider the proposed lease extension for the cell tower operated by AT&amp;T on the grounds of Lamar High School. All right. We will consider that separately. Anything else? All right.
President Rice, I just want to make sure that Ms. Hudson knows if there's something else under the consent agenda. If we're going to handle that as a whole, correct?
Correct.
If you wanted something else to be pulled, this would be the appropriate time to pull it.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. I do think I would like to pull Consent Item -- where do I find the Consent Item? The purchase is greater than $50,000 exempt from bid. Okay. Consent Item D. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Consent Item B.
The -- every item under Consent B or certain specifics?
Specifically, the SRO officers.
Okay. So, B 18-11-16-005?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And that was why your light was indicated. Okay. All right. Don't see anything else. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept.
With the exceptions, obviously.
Motions to accept, with the exceptions of Action Item B 18-11-16-005 and Item D.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Walton, to accept the consent agenda. Short those two items mentioned in the motion. If there's no discussion openly in general, then please vote. Consent passes. Mr. Drolinger, would you like to say anything about consent?
Dr. Rice, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, good evening again.
You don't really have to. I'm just kind of playing with you.
I have the statement prepared.
It's all good. It's all good. Let's move on. So, for the items separate, Mr. Chapa, Item D?
Yeah. I would just like Item D to be carried over to another meeting. We need some time to do some background review of that, look at some numbers on it, and then have it brought back at a future meeting.
Okay. So, we'll move that down. Okay. No problem. All right. And then, on 18-11-16-005, Ms. Hudson?
So, the reason that I requested for this item to be pulled is because there's a discrepancy between the current contract and the amount that's on the consent agenda. So, I'm fine with postponing this item until the next meeting so that we can have some more information about the discrepancy between those two.
Is that something we might be able to gain some clarification here so we can continue on without having to postpone, seeing it as a contractual nature?
Thank you, Mr. Hill. So, my question specifically is that if I'm reading the contract correctly, we have a contract for 13 and 1/2 police officers to serve as our SROs at a certain percentage of their salary, and yet, on the consent agenda, we are providing for 19 police officers, and it's a higher estimated amount, obviously, than what was on the contract. Can you share more information with me about that?
Yes, and so --
And hold on. Sorry, Mr. Hill. Ms. Hudson, can you refer us to which page you're referring to so that we can all follow along?
It is Page 1 of 10 of the contract.
Okay.
And then, Page 18 of our board packet.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Hudson.
Okay. And so, excuse me. The part that's discussing there, that's talking actual officers. And so, we have what we call the officers that are in the schools, and then, those officers have supervisors that supervise them that are at the sergeant level, and then, there's one lieutenant that's over all of them. So, I've got one APD contact, which is a lieutenant. He has two sergeants, and then, those sergeants supervise the officers and the patrolmen in that area. So, the rate that we contract with is different for the lieutenant, different for the sergeant, and different for the officers.
And I would assume, are those on different contracts, or do we not have to contract for those positions?
No, they're all on the same contract. On Page 2 of the contract, it says sergeants provided, two sergeants, and then, it talks about the sergeant competency as well.
It's on the very, very back page. I just didn't turn the back of the page. Thank you so much for answering my questions, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
President Rice, I move that we move to accept Consent Item 18-11-16-005 concerning SRO officers.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Hudson on Item 18-11-16-005 on the SRO officers. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. So, now, we move on to discussion items, and we have one discussion item this evening on the Holdsworth Center update. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice. And tonight, we'd like to give you an update on our partnership with the Holdsworth Center. This is a five-year partnership, as you know, and the district is partnering with Holdsworth Center funded by Charles Butt from HEB Grocery Stores. And so, we've been -- we started a journey with them, and this really has provided an opportunity for us to accelerate the leadership strategy and our strategic plan. And so, Dr. Wertz will give us an overview of what's happening with our Holdsworth partnership. But I'll just tell you upfront that this is an exceptional opportunity to do some work on leadership and really a value to our district and our community because, number one, it's funded by someone else, but also, it's well-resourced to accelerate our leadership development in Arlington ISD at all levels across the organization. So, I'll start with that. But, Dr. Wertz, thank you.
So, good evening, Dr. Rice, members of the school board, Dr. Cavassos. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to share with you information and update about our partnership with Holdsworth. I echo what Dr. Cavassos says. Personally, this has probably been one of the strongest professional learning experiences I've had in my career, and I think it adds a lot of value to our system in terms of leadership development. So, I'm excited to share with you some of the details, a little bit about it. As Dr. Cavassos indicated, this really is an accelerant to our strategic plan. Our strategic plan outlines a very specific goal around preparing students in terms of graduating 100% of them exceptionally prepared, and we do believe that leadership plays a key role in that process. In fact, we have a performance objective that's specifically around leadership development with a strategy about enhancing core competencies for leaders and managers across our system. And the purpose of leadership development really is centralized around our goal around developing students and helping to increase their outcomes. And so, our work with Holdsworth really helps us to accelerate that process. So, you may ask yourself, "Why education leadership?" And really, great leadership is a really critical role when it comes to impacting student achievement in a school system. In fact, outside of the school teacher, or second to only the school teacher, a principal at a school is the most influential impact on achievement in a classroom. In fact, leadership that's widely distributed, rather than top-down but widely distributed, actually has the greatest amount of effect in a school, effect in a school district, and it allows principals and leaders to actually change trajectories of student achievement outcomes in ways that are unparalleled. As a point of interest in the state of Texas, Texas needs approximately about 10,000 principals and superintendents currently. On the slide, you can see the current number of principals and superintendents that are actually in the system. But in spite of all of the people that are already currently sitting in the roles, if you were to interview school districts across the country, you would find that many of them still struggle to find effective school leaders. And we have been in that position before here in Arlington. Many of the things that you'll hear is that the pool is not deep enough, there is a level of leaders that are in the system for quite some time, and then, they retire, and then, there's not enough people on the bench, so to speak, that are ready to take their roles. You'll often hear sometimes that school districts are often fighting for the same candidates, and in some cases, even the quality of the candidates who are applying for the pools aren't ready with the right skills needed to effectively move instruction in campuses. And this is not a problem that's singular or isolated to one part of the state. It's really pretty broad across Texas. And so, Holdsworth really is a center that's designed to try and approach this problem in a very systematic way. They have a goal and an outcome of reaching an outcome that has an unprecedented scale. They have an intention on working with districts of a different variety, so they want districts that are from rural areas, they're working -- interested in working with districts from urban areas. Their goal is to actually affect student outcomes in the classroom, but to do that through the development and the capacity building of leaders. And they tend to work with leaders in a district, but at all levels of the organization. I'm going to share with you a little bit about what that will look like here in Arlington. Holdsworth approach is a little different than many systems. Their role is not to come in and be -- take over leadership development. So, you could go to some systems or some organizations, and you would contract them in, and they would come in, and they take over the whole process for leadership development, and you kind of step aside as a system. That's not what Holdsworth is designed to do. In fact, Holdsworth is specifically characterized around this idea of a long-term partnership with the district with the intention of building the district's leaders' capacity in the system to stand on their -- whoops, sorry. To stand on their own. I was like, "What's that noise here?" So, instead of quick fixes, Holdsworth is actually designed to take this long view, long-term view, and recognize that if you're going to make any lasting change or improvement in a system, that it takes time, and it's not something that's actually going to occur overnight. They don't see leaders as some type of superhero that's going to come in and save the day. They really believe that a system that's going to be successful with students requires teams, and it requires systems of leaders that are developed in a systematic way. They're also not intention, like I said, to replace any role in the district. They literally stand side by side with you and help you build the infrastructure to support leadership development. And they don't, what we say, is peddle prescriptions. They're not giving you, trying to give you quick fixes or easy solutions to more complex problems. They really want to sit side by side with you as a deep, you know, think partner and help you work through the challenges and build infrastructures and systems to address those challenges in your unique setting, which is different in Arlington, say, and districts that are around us. There's a three-pronged approach to their mission. It involves district support as the centerpiece with two programs on the side. A two-year program that's designed to build leadership development and capacity at the district level, and then, one that's specifically directed on impacting student achievement at the campus level. So, at the district support level, it's a five-year commitment. So, our goal, I mean, our commitment with Holdsworth is to work with them for five years, and their purpose with us is to help us identify talent, effectively place talent, support talent, and develop them, and to really build a bench of leaders that could actually assume roles as the need occurs. The other idea is to provide enough professional learning and development and support of current sitting leaders so that you can retain effective leadership in your district, and there isn't the attrition rate that's constantly requiring a kind of a retool. It also allows them, they also have the idea or the interest of customizing their support at the district level. So, one of the things I'll be sharing with you is the way they actually have staff that are hired, that work with us and work in-house with us several days a week to help us in our process, to think with us, and to help us design our systems. They also will, are assisting us in assessing our own capacities against what we know are best practice benchmarks, and also, build a plan that addresses the gaps that that assessment actually is identifying. While that's occurring, there's a two-year program that starts, and in Arlington, we started back in June. And this work, this initial two-year stint is specifically working with the superintendent and the leadership team at the central level. And the idea behind that is to really start to elevate the vision that's common amongst all of us around what excellence looks like, and then, also, to build a very specific strategy for change management and how to lead effectively an entire -- for change management and how to lead effectively an entire team through that change process. It's also an action-based approach to learning. So, you're not going to find with Holdsworth that it's just about learning theory. Sometimes you'll go to programs where you learn theoretically, but there's not a real strong application. In our work with Holdsworth, you very specifically learn about best practice, and then you're asked to turn it around and turn it into applying the concepts specifically in the systems that you're designing at the district level. After the two years with, at the district level, then it turns into with principals, and eventually it'll, it really hit about 65% of our principals will actively participate in the process directly from Holdsworth. They also participate in a two-year program, which has very similar mission on the front side, which is about elevating this common vision around excellence, creating systems and structures to facilitate effective change that promotes student outcomes. I think what you're going to notice in the difference between the district leaders' program and the campus leaders' program is the district's leaders' program is focused on developing systems to transform leadership, and in the campus-based approach, it's really about helping principals to apply their learning to reach specific student outcomes, since that's where the students live, is at the schools. So, how does the district create support structures to support principals, and then how do principals leverage those support structures to produce outcomes for students? So, there are really three big deliverables that come from our relationship with Holdsworth, and the first one is really about just creating this idea of a critical mass of leaders throughout the system that all have a common, shared experience and a common vision for what excellence looks like, and specifically around leadership. Some of the things that we're looking at is, are the concepts around personal leadership? How do we lead personally? What role does emotional intelligence and time management and things like that work in the way that you lead other people? Also about talent development, how do you develop a culture intentionally in a school system so that you can actualize the goals that you have set for yourself? And then how do those things translate into success in the classroom? The other thing is it's about developing capacity, sincerely enhancing the capacity of the district and campus-level leaders so that you can increase their skill sets and facilitate effectively the changes actually needed to see change happen in the classroom. And then finally, they have, there's a strategic approach to leadership development that's embedded throughout the organization. So, not only are you just creating a bench and working towards retaining effective leaders, but also creating pathways so that regardless of which part of the system you're a member of, whether you're a classroom teacher, whether you're a sitting principal, or you're a principal who wants to go into executive leadership, that there is a pipeline or a pathway for you to continually grow and develop, and that there's specific training for you to in fact do that. So, this is an example of the, like a visual of the framework at Holdsworth, and you'll notice that it's actually separated into three distinct areas. There are enablers on the bottom, which really set the foundation for the work and the systems that are, need to be put in place in order to actualize your goals. There are specific pillars which represent the outcomes in some ways that we're looking for in terms of systems, which really focus on identifying future leaders, developing those leaders once they're identified, placing them effectively and matching their placement with their skill sets, and then effectively supporting them when they're in those placements to be effective in their roles. And the idea is that if those two things are in place, the enablers are in place and the pillars are effectively executed, that that would result in the outcomes with the ultimate outcome about increasing the school climates, increasing student engagement and parent engagement, which would effectively produce student results. Our partnership with Holdsworth actually came to be out of a competitive application process. We competed with districts all across the state of Texas. We submitted a, I want to say, pretty lengthy application. I think it was approximately 11 pages. They had a site visit and conducted interviews, walked campuses with us, and they selected seven districts in the state of Texas to participate. It is 100% funded, as Dr. Cavassos indicated, from Mr. Charles Butt, who is the founder of HEB Stores. I believe that he's contributed over $100 million to develop the center that's intended to do this across the state of Texas. We are the first cohort. Our relationship with them, like I mentioned, is approximately five years, and it, right now, where the focus has really been around the training and development around systems at district leadership, and eventually we'll begin to transition into campus leadership. I thought I would spend a little bit of time talking about the foundation and kind of work our way up the top, just to give everyone a context about how the system's actually going to work. So, the first place that you begin is around district culture, and district culture is important because it's the foundation for how you actually create an environment for which the kind of learning experience you want students to have exists. Culture is a leadership function. It's, it has to be intentionally facilitated. It identifies and articulates with clarity the behaviors that we want to foster, that we believe translate into effective outcomes for students in the classroom. And so, in Arlington, when we actually thought about how to facilitate district culture, we did start the entire process with the student. And I think that's an important part to actually think about, because if you look at their framework, the outcomes that they're at, that's at the top of the framework, so the roof, so to speak, is about students, and in Arlington ISD, we don't have that just as our roof, we actually start with them. So, we start with the students in mind, think about the kind of culture we have to develop and sustain in order for us to actually reach the pinnacle at the top, which is actually student achievement. So, we have been concentrating heavily on how to design an effective experience for students in the classroom. We believe that if we want students to be exceptionally prepared, when they leave us and go into whatever field that may be, whether it's post-secondary education or a college or a career of their choice, that there are very specific qualities and characteristics our students need to embody. If you were to interview, and there's lots of research on this, employers across the state of Texas or even across the country, there are characteristics and qualities they're specifically looking for in the individuals they're trying to employ, and most of those things are actually soft skills. The ability to collaborate with other people who think and act differently than you, your ability to communicate verbally and in writing, your ability to problem solve. And so, we started thinking about, what is the best way for us to prepare our students for a future that looks very different than the one that we grew up in? And so, we've landed on six specific principles. We want our students to walk away as responsible citizens that can contribute to their communities in meaningful ways. We want our students to learn how to be self-directed and self-motivated so that they can be self-sufficient in their own life. We want them to learn how to collaborate with other people who think and act differently than they do. We want them to think critically and be able to effectively problem solve around complex issues, and we also want them to be able to communicate effectively so that they are heard and understood, and also can receive communication from other people. We believe that in order to facilitate that, that it happens only when those experiences are facilitated on a daily basis. You can't learn to collaborate with people who think and act differently like you, than you, if you don't, if you're not regularly given that opportunity to do that. And so, we try to couch that in experiences that we call rigorous and relevant by embedding research-based practices in the classroom that help that occur. And in order for all of this to happen, we believe that it requires proactive leadership. You don't change practice with adults, and you don't foster support in those situations by accident, it has to happen with intentionality, and that's a function of leadership. And so, there's a very specific call to action that we've created around this idea, which is about really creating and influencing a high-performing organizational culture by supporting the leaders to establish and sustain systems and behaviors that guarantee what we're calling active learning. And when we say active learning, we're talking about students who are active learners, not passive learners, in situations that develop those qualities and characteristics that I was describing through best practice. So, we've asked ourselves, if that's our call to action, what does this actually mean? How do you do this? Well, the first thing you have to do is define the behaviors, and then once you define the behaviors, then there has to be specific leadership development about how do you help cultivate those behaviors in the environment that you're actually serving and leading in? And then finally, really align and design systems that are aligned to a very specific theory of action, which is really about if-then statements. If there's a specific outcome you want to get to, how do you back plan and make sure all the, like dominoes, so to speak, fall in place so that's the outcome you land on? And then finally, how do you measure your progress towards those things? So, the very first step is building and establishing strong cultural tenants. And our six cultural tenants that we've established as a foundation for all of our work are really around the student. Put students first, promote risk-taking and innovation, owning our work, making every interaction count, which is really about understanding and making a difference with others, responding positively to those differences, and getting better every day, this concept of continuous improvement. It's our belief that if we, as a leadership team, foster these cultural tenants within our system, that we are best situating ourselves to actualize our call to action, which will in fact translate into experiences that are meaningful for students in the classroom. So, when it comes to the framework that we're working on with Holdsworth, I just want to emphasize the marriage of those two, these two concepts, that the foundation of all of it really lies on these unspoken kind of behaviors that we foster in an organization that we work in, which is around a culture. The next step is the systems, and so if you go kind of like a couple of rungs into the framework, you're going to notice that there's district-wide leadership definition, and then there are all these kind of like, these stones, so to speak, around role definition, data systems, evaluation systems, how do you effectively communicate these things, and then incentives in the system. And so, in order to understand how to design a system, you have to first learn about it. And so, Holdsworth has facilitated opportunities for district leadership to go and actually see world-class systems who have the right qualities that we know are research-based best practice in place that are effectively working, and they facilitated opportunities for us to make these site visits so that we can, one, visually understand them, and then also reinforce them as we try to build our own systems here in Arlington. And so, this is a slide that kind of articulates a couple of things, and I'll highlight what it is first, and then I'll kind of walk you through it. The first thing that you'll notice on the slide is, on the side, on the left-hand side, it lists the enablers, which are, you'll notice on the framework, these core, this third of the framework on the bottom, like what builds it up. And then when I move on to the presentation, you're going to notice that column then shifts to pillars. And each of these enablers of the leadership development systems, they're actually supported by what we call capabilities. And so, capabilities are the actual practices that you want to see embedded or functioning in the system in order for it to work well. On the right-hand side, these are the places that we went to go see these in practice. And so, you're going to notice there's a couple of things here. There's the Singapore flag, which represents when we went specifically and looked for that capability in Singapore. You'll notice HUB, where we went and saw it in practice within the private sector, like in a business, and it's really quite amazing how many things you can actually learn around leadership in the business world that apply very well in the educational environment. And then finally, the very last one is our trip to Ontario, Canada. And so, as you're kind of going through the slide, every single capability that's noted there, and there are 18 that are noted from the aligned leadership definition on through each of the pillars, if you want to, if you, in order to identify specifically what we were looking at when we went to each of these locations, the flag or the symbol is placed next to it. So, you'll notice the first thing we did, the very first trip we went to was Singapore, and we, Dr. Cavassos and I, along with two members from each of the other seven districts, were hosted by Holdsworth in Singapore to go and look at a world-class system. And I will say, it was an amazing learning experience. The things that they are doing in that country and the amount of growth that they've made in a 50-year time period, where they literally went from a country that was really placed in, like kind of put on their own with, really abruptly, from like a swampland to this vibrant, world-class kind of world leader, in terms of economic world leader, in a 50-year short time span. And when you get into learning about the system, especially the educational systems, which they believe their people are their primary resource because they have to import everything, because it's an island, what they did to foster that has really been amazing to actually go and study. And so, some of the things that we looked at specifically around culture, that we looked, not only at Singapore, but that we looked that was embodied in the work at HEB, and then we also went and saw again when we were sitting in Toronto, is this idea of candor, like learning how to facilitate a culture where people can actually share their honest beliefs and ideas. This idea of meritocracy, which is the idea that, where the district actually believes that you're, that there should be a differentiation between when good performance is happening and when performance actually needs support, because it's not happening in the ideal scenario, so that you differentiate for needs to make sure that people are growing effectively. Specificity, meaning that there are actual specific discussions about talent, specifically what high-quality talent actually looks like, what are the characteristics and qualities, and that we don't label talent around these vague categories, but you specify and call out like what quality leadership actually looks like. And then fostering this idea around a growth mindset, that we want to constantly improve and change, and how do you, how do you help people do that? We also looked at, in all three of those locations, we taught, we looked specifically around the definition of leadership and the competencies attached to leadership, and if you were in Singapore, or you went to HEB, or you went to the schools in Ontario, Canada, the definition for leadership is very clearly defined. There is no, there's no, there's complete clarity, there is no ambiguity around that. They've done that in a way where they take their competencies, and then they align them to their talent management process. So, if they want to grow and develop people, they grow and develop them towards an endpoint, which is connected to their definition. There's also strong organizational infrastructures in all those locations that we went to actually observe, and you'll see them noted there. We went and looked at how they define their leadership roles, we looked specifically about how they, how each of those systems effectively track their key performance indicators and manage leaders through a data management system to get a sense of who's growing and who needs support, and how are we doing that? We also had looked at their evaluation systems to make sure they were developmentally oriented, so it was about growth and development and improvement, and not just about this idea of an annual or a summative evaluation that really doesn't promote growth or change. We looked specifically about how compensation was being leveraged to attract and retain quality talent. Specifically, we saw that in Singapore. So, those were just some enablers that we saw in each of the different sites that we visited over the last several months. The other things that we looked at specifically around capabilities were the four pillars. So, you remember the four pillars are around identifying future leaders, developing future leaders, effectively placing them, and then supporting them in those placements. We looked for the same, we looked for evidence of those capabilities within each of those sites as well, specifically looking about how the districts plan for talent and needs on a long-term basis. So, you're thinking about succession planning, like how do you effectively do that? We also looked about how do you recruit future leaders, both internally and externally? How do high-potential leaders, how they're systemically identified within the system? So, how do you recognize potential when it's sitting there? How do you know a classroom teacher now has the potential to be a principal later? Like, how do you go through that process? What do you look for? We also looked at how you clearly define tracks, so that if I'm a teacher in the system and I'm new, I still know clearly like what my future career opportunities are, and specifically how I can prepare for them, not, kind of just leave it to chance. We also looked at how aspiring leaders are actually encouraged to take ownership for their own development, so, and this was really fascinating to see both in Ontario and in Singapore, that there, because the system and structures were actually put in place, people didn't necessarily just have to wait for a vacancy and hope that they got selected, they could actually own their own development towards an endpoint, and the districts would actually know who those people were and how to help support them in the process. The other thing that we looked at finally was around this idea of placing and supporting school leaders. And this was a really interesting idea because it was really about how do you match a high-quality leader that's identified with the right circumstance to which you can leverage then their strengths to make a difference for students? So, we looked specifically in Singapore about how leaders were promoted specifically through a high, highly rigorous selection process, and then they were, their performance and their skills and their strengths were actually tracked. We also then looked about how then they were then matched to an effective location where those skills could actually be leveraged. We also went and observed how the, what the onboarding process will look like, and how do you transition sites and locations from one school leader to the next without disrupting services to either a faculty or students? We also looked specifically about around professional development opportunities, how there was a systemic process for developing leaders, to the point where there is credentialing that happens for these individuals. And then finally, how the central office streamlined the operation specifically to minimize bureaucracy and allow principals to really kind of dive deep and do the work around instructional leadership that you hire them to do to impact student outcomes. So, we did this by kind of, by looking at several different things, and I'll just go through them real briefly, I won't read everything on the slide, but basically in Singapore, they have an organization called the National Institute of Education, which is the organization that trains every teacher in all of Singapore. We were able to go over, go to that organization, watch that practice, interview their staff, get a sense of how their system actually functions. We talked to them about their academy of principals, how they actually develop principals when they're selected. We looked at the specific training and development modules that they actually put their groups through. We also then went to the private sector at HEB, and we went to see, how does a, how does a company identify potential in their employees? What can we actually glean from that process? How do they organize their systems in such a way so that they can actually make sure that the leaders they're developing are completely aligned to the definition that they have in place around what they feel is their values or what's important for them? And then specifically, what was really interesting about HEB is how they leverage a really complex data management system. how they leverage a really complex data management system to identify potential, and to basically track their effectiveness, and making sure that people were having opportunities to grow and develop towards the areas that they wanted to, so that when promotion opportunities were there, they actually know who was ready to take those slots, and there was intentional succession planning. And then finally, our most recent trip was in Ontario, and what we looked at was their Ontario Leadership Framework, which was a framework that really was embedded in all of their work around leadership development. They have a strong, they have a very diverse population, lots of indigenous people that live in the Canadian area. And so, they talked a lot about equity, and how to develop this idea around equity deeply within their actual systems. And we saw some very powerful things in some of the schools, the way social justice was actually being taught to students through the curriculum in a way that was really powerful, so they understood exactly like who they were as people, and how can they embrace differences in other people, is really, really powerful. And this idea around equity is very much part of their framework. So, we got to learn about this concept and then go see it in action, like how it translates into their day-to-day. And then finally, we, our visit in Ontario was really focused around three distinct districts in that area, and so, we, we looked specifically for how they identify, develop, place, and support their, their leadership. And the neat thing, I will say, as a sidebar around Ontario, that's, that was unique of all these visits, is Canada is our neighbor. So, the context was very similar to ours. And so, many of the challenges that they're experiencing are ones that we experienced, so it was very easy to make that kind of, that link between the work that we're doing and the work that they're doing. So, I thought now I would just share with you a little bit about our work, now that we've kind of traveled, we've seen the, the practices of the companies that we want to develop in practice in these different locations. And so, we've started our work specifically on the next phase, which was the very starting point, which is the definition of leadership. So, before you can build any of the infrastructures or systems to identify talent, to grow talent, to place talent, you can't do that until you define like what talent actually is, like what is the leadership of definition. And so, there is a cross-section of stakeholders across the district that have started to build this leadership definition here in Arlington. And this is really important, because it does two things, for future leaders and for sitting leaders. For future leaders, it helps them understand how leaders in the system are identified and selected, so if I want to be a leader, how do I do that? It also gives them, like I was saying earlier, a chance to start to grow, take ownership of their own growth and development. And then, they can, future leaders, receive targeted professional learning, because a system has been designed around an endpoint that we're looking for, which is our definition. If you're a sitting principal or a sitting leader, there's also benefits to having a leadership definition, because now there is a clear and consistent standard from which you can then be measured again. So, you can consistently grow your own self, or, or be coached towards an endpoint. It also allows you to really engage in customized professional learning, that's towards a very specific type of leader that Arlington's looking for. So, in essence, it's almost like what the cultural tenants do. A leadership definition defines what Arlington believes is quality leadership, that will translate into effective learning in the classroom, and then you build all the systems and infrastructures to make that kind, that kind of thing happen. So, this has been our timeline. You'll notice on there, there's two kind of parallel things happening. On the bottom, there's this definition of leadership that's occurring, and simultaneously, at the same moment, there is an assessment of the district's leadership development capabilities that's occurring. And the purpose of this assessment is for us to measure ourselves as a benchmark against this world-class system, and then identify where do our gaps exist, and where's our starting point in terms of our work and our development. The assessment is a full diagnostic. It includes surveys, it includes interviews. We've actually submitted, we've actually submitted data and documents as evidence to what those systems actually are. The intention of the survey was to really gather broad input from our stakeholders around what, how they're actually experiencing leadership and leadership systems in Arlington. So, the survey was sent out at the end of September. It went to central office staff, principals, it went to assistant principals, coaches, deans of instruction, it went to teachers. If you touch learning in the system in some way connected to learning, you received, you received the survey. And so, we gathered all that survey, and we had a pretty good response rate. I want to say, I think we reached about a 50%, 45% response rate on our survey. And then, what we did, what Holdsworth did is, once they gathered the survey results, then they conducted interviews and focus groups. And the intention behind the interviews and the focus groups were to look for the trends that were coming out of the surveys, and then how do you dive deeper and get context into what people actually meant? You know, asking a survey question tells you some data quantifiably, but then there's a reason why people mark what they mark. And so, you want to get a sense of what that is. So, there were focus groups that were done. So, they, we, they met individually with principal supervisors, so the area superintendents. They met individually with key central office members that were specifically connected to leadership development. So, if you worked in central office and you were, you had work in the area of developing leaders, you were interviewed individually. And then there were focus groups that were done. There was focus groups with principals, there were focus groups with the APs, deans, and, and coaches. And then, we also did focus groups with teachers. And we also did focus groups with participants who are actually participating in our Emerging Leaders Program, so those that are already in, who are aspiring to leadership, who are actually engaging in this idea of leadership development already. And then the last piece that we did is submit a variety of documents. So, they, they requested documents as evidence for many of their competencies, and they asked us to identify any documents that we have that may represent areas where we're already working. And so, we submitted all these things. And so, what they've done is, they have taken the survey, the interviews, and the data documents, and they're compiling this, this comprehensive assessment that's going to help us identify where our gaps are, so that we can then begin to build our infrastructure. So, this is just a quick timeline, or a kind of a progress, a progress line, a line of progress around the steps that we've been taking that I've been mentioning. So, we did our assessments. The, in the actual assessment we'll receive, this gives you a sample of each of those components that will be there. They're going to provide us with an overview. They're going to help us identify what our outcome measures are, specifically give us a scorecard that compares where we are in each of the enablers and pillars. So, literally, like, you'll get a pillar, and then they're going to color-code the pillars, so we can get a sense of where we measure compared to best practice. And then there will be deep dives around data that will help us interpret the, the judgments that are actually made in the assessment in our work. I wanted to share with you just briefly a little bit about the process we've been going through with our leadership definition, because it's so critical to, I believe, the success, as it's a core foundation to our process. This is an example of HEB's broad leadership definition, excuse me. And really, there is a two-step process that we're going through to define the leadership. The first thing is that we want to, we want to create a framework that defines it broadly, so that regardless of what, who you are, what your role is in the organization, that you can identify with it, and you understand like where your entry point is. After we do that, then we will go down to more role specificity. So, for example, if you are working in HEB, and they have this idea that everyone should communicate and, and have influence, that looks different if you're a store manager, or if you're a cashier. Well, it's the same concept in, in, in education, when we, if that was our idea right there about communicating influence, what would that look like if you were a teacher, and what would that look like if you were actually a principal? And so, once we finish defining leadership in a broad spec, a broad kind of spectrum, or a broad way, then what we'll do is, we'll go down to more role specifics, so people can see and understand like what that means to them personally, and the role that they're in. The process has been very iterative. We have done lots of ideation and created drafts. The important thing about this process was that we wanted to include a broad range of stakeholders in that, in that discussion, so that it wasn't isolated to even academics. And then, we want it to be grounded in research. What we didn't want to do is create a process where a group of people got together, and we just talked about what great leadership we thought we should have, or ones that we personally experienced. What we wanted to do was get examples in research about what are, what are the best practices that occur in the world, so to speak, that actually, that leaders actually do that translate into results for, for kids. And so, we looked at several pieces. This is just an example of a few. We looked at the Ontario Leadership Framework, we looked at our field frameworks, we looked at the research out of the University of Washington, we looked actually at the YMCA Framework, we looked at KIP Framework, and we studied these frameworks. And we started to identify like, what are the indicators that are in these? Why are they placed there? How do they organize them? And the idea behind that was for us to kind of glean from them, what we thought was actually being said in those, in that, in that research. And we started ideating, like, what are the big themes that we see are coming, and what could some of our own descriptors be? And then, we went, after we went through that process, then we would go back and compare our work to the research again, to see, did we have gaps? Are there things that are in the research that we missed, or are there things that we have duplication that we should be collapsing? This is the process that we've kind of gone through. And the idea is that when you finish, you actually land on this, this kind of high-level framework that applies to everybody in the system. We're still in that process. There are approximately 40 members in our task force in the district. It includes teachers, assistant principals, principals, members of senior staff. We have staff in this depart, in this task force from academic services, from transformational learning, from finance. We have people from security and transportation. And I will be honest, like, it has been a very rewarding experience. The passion from the group has been incredible. It has been really neat to interact with people from finance, or interact with people that are working in the warehouse and in transportation, and to listen to their ideas around leadership, and for them to constantly remind us about the idea of making sure that whatever we publish, it can, that it's everybody in the, in the entire organization, regardless if you're working in the warehouse, or you're sitting as a principal, that it means something to someone, and that we all understand it. So, I will say, it has been, it has been a really rewarding experience. And below are just some examples of some pictures that we've gone through that process. This has been our journey. We started back at the end of September. There are two components to our development. There's a steering committee, which is made up of six members of the district's senior leadership and executive team, who are actually engaging with Holdsworth in each of the month's professional learning and travel sessions. So, this steering committee is not, is made up of people who are actually getting firsthand experience in learning the research, and then actually going and seeing it in practice, and also collaborating, engaging with the other districts that are part of the Holdsworth group, the seven districts total. And then, there's the task force. So, there's this relationship between the steering committee and this task force, where the task force designs and provides input. It goes to the steering committee, who looks at it, kind of comes up with final iterations, brings it back, gets feedback, and there's this kind of this back-and-forth relationship. So, if you kind of follow the path, you can get a sense of the work we've been doing this entire semester around the definition development. We've had three steering committee meetings so far, and we've had three task force committee meetings. So, we're getting close to the final stages of our final iteration of our leadership definition. We're not there yet. We're getting close to the end. We have a steering committee meeting that will meet in December, and then we'll reconvene the task force again in January to talk about it and kind of get feedback. The next steps actually are, once we define this broad definition around leadership, then we'll spend the next years working on defining those expectations by role, and then finally, creating very specific systems around professional development, feedback and coaching, recruitment and retention, all of that, to facilitate the, the actual articulation in the system of the, of the definition that we wrote. I think one thing to note about the definition, I think it's important to note, is that it is aspirational in nature. It's kind of like the cultural tendency in that way. As human beings, no one's ever perfect in everything, but you want to create something that you aspire to. There is a, a set of leadership practices that we know are best practice, and while we may not always embody those 100% all the time, because we're people, we want something that we can aspire to, so we can constantly get better. And so, you're going to notice that when we do land on the leadership definition, and it is presented to you, there is this aspirational quality that's connected to it. It's also defined specifically to be very clear, so that everyone knows exactly what it means and can identify with it, but also have this motivational kind of aspect to it, so that you can read it, and it invokes some kind of emotion in you in some way, so that you feel motivated by it. And then, finally, it is the articulation of the culture. There should be a, you should be able to see a very clear alignment between the cultural tenants that lay the foundation for the work, and the actual behaviors that you expect to see in the leaders. And we talked a lot about how do we make sure that alignment occurs, so that you're not actually creating two systems that don't do the same thing. So, our next steps that you'll see over the next semester and couple of years is really going to be focused on these, these two gray bars, which is really about finalizing the definition, then creating the systems in place to make sure that that becomes actualized in the system itself. And again, the idea behind that is that it serves as this accelerant of our strategic plan specifically around the strategy about building leadership competencies, and providing our employees a pathway to grow and develop in their career, in a way that's going to impact our learners in the classroom. Any questions?
Okay, everybody take a breath. People are digesting. There are lights flashing. Excellent information. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Raj. I just want to say, what an awesome opportunity for our, our district. I also just want to say thank you for taking a hold of that opportunity, and going in. We demand expectations of excellence from our students, from our teachers. And I think it's amazing to see the leaders, or the people who are pushing down those expectations, to also make sure that they're doing things, to make sure that they are at the top of their game, as everyone in the system is expected to be, and then take that information and push down, which at the end of the day, we're anticipating would make for exceptional students that we say we have to do. So, I, I just wanted to stop and just say, thank you for utilizing all this available time that y'all have to continue to better yourselves as leaders, and I really do appreciate that.
No, no problem. Ms. Hudson?
Thank you, President Raj. I don't really have a question. I just kind of have something to add to what Keisha said. I also echo her gratitude, that we're not just focusing on the buildings, we're focusing on what's happening in those buildings at a curriculum level, and then at a leadership level. Like, you guys are taking a holistic and well-rounded approach to continuing to build on the excellence here in Arlington. One thing that I did notice as you were going through your presentation, is that this Holdsworth has taken you to a variety of different places to see examples of some of the things that y'all are trying to create, but there wasn't one place where you could go and see it all. So, in a lot of ways, you're breaking new ground, and you're really trying to come together with people, with all stakeholders, and, and build something that's fresh and new, and that's kind of exciting, and, and kind of dangerous, and, you know, I don't mean dangerous in a bad way, but just, it's, it's a risk, but it's a really good risk. And I'm really grateful that you guys are willing to, as Ms. Mays said, take additional time outside of what you're doing for the students right now, and say, how can we, how can we push, and how can we really create something unique, and that really does for our students what we expect our school system to do for them. So, just an appreciation, and I, I just found it super-interesting that no one has achieved that yet. So, if we can, or if we can at least get close, and then keep building on it, that's exciting.
Well, I will say, Holdsworth has done an outstanding job recruiting some of the best minds to lead this work. If you were to have, if you happen to have an opportunity to go onto their website and look at their board of directors, and even their own staff, they really have done an excellent job recruiting the best minds to help design these systems. And one thing I would say in terms of our, our travel, is there's a lot of pre-work. So, we do a lot of reading before we get there, and then, they intentionally design your time there, so that you're literally spending time looking for those specific things. And one of the things I appreciate about the fact that it's kind of broke up, whether you see certain things in Singapore and certain things in Ontario, is there's a lot of, there's a lot of capabilities to study and learn, and it's impossible to kind of like learn it all at once. And so, there's been some intentionality on their part over the last, because we started this process in June, and we just finished our last trip in October, I think, that there's been this methodical way for us to digest and think about it. But they started in a place where you, your mind was just shifted right away, just because, by the power of what you're actually watching, and, and the environment that you're in. So, yes, I, I agree with you. The, the power will be when you design the systems that include all the capabilities. It's been really incredible experience to look at them deeply in each of those three locations, and see them differently, because you'll notice on that list, some, some of the items all three have, and some of the items they're only seen in one. And that's an interesting idea. Yeah. It was, it's been really fascinating. Yeah.
Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Raj. Yeah, we will have a unique fingerprint when we're done too, I think, you know, and that, that'll be, that'll be a good thing. We're all different. I just think, it was probably about the second thing you said, about how building strong leaders, leaders in our district will help the kids. I mean, that's kind of oversimplifying it, but that's our goal. And if we can accomplish that, if, if we can provide leadership for our district, and for our, our staff, and, and people who do the work, and encourage them to be leaders also. and encourage them to be leaders also. You know, teacher leaders are very important to a campus. And, and for the kids. So that, that's the good part. It's going to translate down well for, you know, for our, our product and our, our customers.
I don't see any other lights. I'll say that slowly. And while I'm waiting, just in case, I, I want to say thank you for the commitment. For you, Dr. Kavasos, your senior team, the, the time away, the travel, the experiences obviously are, are incredible. But the, the potential outcome is incredibly powerful. It's very special to be awarded in a competitive environment, one of seven, to be the trial run at this. And to have five months running and all of that travel and still another, at least probably one or two months before you actually have just the definition of what we see as leadership. That speaks volumes to the depth of this work. It's, you know, we go through strategic planning, and it's no, no short order by any means. But this, just to come up with the definition to this, the scope that you've already endured and participated in is really quite remarkable. Really excited to receive continual updates on the progress to see the, the definition and then the foundational rocks, as you called them, and the pillars and, and all the way up to our ultimate outcome, which is obviously student success. Great, great stuff. So I do not see any other lights. Dr. Kavasos, yes?
I just, I just want to also share that I want to thank the board for really allowing and embracing this opportunity. It is because we have a strategic plan. It is because the board has dedicated so much time. We are, we were positioned to compete, to be selected for this opportunity. But it ran across the entire system. And it's because of your leadership and your commitment and the things that we've done together that resonated with Holdsworth team as, as part of their selection process. So I thank you for also embracing this and really investing your time in this opportunity as well.
Well, absolutely. And I think that's a great segue to bring this to close to, as you already mentioned, our cultural tenants that we have up here. Promote risk-taking is, these aren't in any order, but promote risk-taking is, is one. And that was already mentioned, that this is a positive risk. And without that, as part of our culture, our students won't have the great opportunities that they will because of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have our open forum for non-agenda items. I do not see any cards. Okay, getting affirmation from Ms. Benjamin. Thank you. So now we will move on to the superintendent's report.
No report.
No report. Any school board members with reports? I do not see any lights indicating such, so we will continue and move on. Next on our agenda is a grievance hearing, a Level Four grievance hearing of Mr. Luis Castillo. This is under Board Policy GF Local. Consistent with Policy GF Local, this grievance hearing is being heard in a closed meeting. So at this point, I do ask everyone who is not party to the hearing or is not going to participate in the hearings to please exit the boardroom at this time. And also at this time, the board is going to convene a brief recess into closed session pursuant to sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. For specifically reasons, consult with legal counsel. We will be back shortly. Thank you. Time is 8:41. Thank you.
The time is 9:41. The board closed, ended its closed session at 9:40. We are now in open session.
Thank you, Mr. Akabom. And I do not see Mr. Castillo. Mr. Castillo is left. We still have potential business here. Are there any, any questions, motions from trustees at this time?
President Raj, I move that we uphold the Level Three grievance opinion by the administration.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Hudson, Mrs. Hudson, on upholding administrations' decisions. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. Decision upheld. It is 9:42. I call this meeting adjourned.